Okay, good evening and welcome to the November 18th Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is visitors' comments. If anyone would like to come forward, please give your name and your street address. Anyone?
Yeah.
Where's the microphone? Hopefully that little one down below will pick up your voice.
Oh, we got it.
I watch.
Thank you. Steve Cosm, Peter Thorndike. A couple of meetings ago, there was a discussion at the end, really not a discussion, but a mention of the railway station and town highway department barn at the same time. Can somebody elaborate on that, what was going on there?
So, the Palmer Railroad, the Steering Committee had been looking at various sites. And one of the sites that was proposed to move forward and currently is still is the DPW site. So, the thought was to, we appropriated money to look at the feasibility of a DPW site at Burley Park to find, figure out if that's a feasibility, if it's feasible site actually. And that would be coming to play if the rail stop is chosen for that location. But there's no guarantee the rail stop is gonna go there. Just, there's five, five areas outlined right now that are feasible on paper that the Mass DOT has outlined. And there's gonna be a further meeting with that in December. I don't have the exact date yet, it's still being worked out at the library for an update on that. But that'll be open to the public. But that was the only correlation between the two, was that we asked for, I think it was thirteen or fourteen thousand, maybe fifteen, for funding for a feasibility study to happen at Burley Park for a DPW complex.
Seems to me that would be the worst spot you could pick. Flood zone and next to a super fun site and down in a hole and the tracks are way above the depot there. And what's wrong with the railroad station that was...
That's where I, I won't get into that right now. But there's gonna be a presentation to, that's gonna be open for the public, for public comment. And they're gonna disclose why they've narrowed down from eleven to those five sites. And that'll be all outlined in feasibility. And you'll see, they have a grade structure on all of these that propose economic development, cost to improve the site conditions, is it in a floodplain, all of that is outlined. And that'll be a public, open meeting in December. So, all of your concerns, I think that you just raised are criteria that are answered. Just as, it's not, that's not public information yet, it'll be public in, I think mid-December's the date.
You have railroad station in that picture now?
It's one of the five that were proposed to move forward, they do more, that they did more due diligence on.
And quick, quick answer to your question about Burley Park, it's town property. I don't know if there's any other town property.
Yeah, I think you were, you meant the DPW site for the rail stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, not Burley Park for DPW.
No, he was talking about the relocation of the DPW department to Burley Park.
Where, where it goes, you know?
Right. We just, there's only so much town property we can put a DPW, so that's, right.
Seems like it's out of the, you know, out of the area anyway. Yeah, 'cause I was concerned about that, if we're gonna spend more millions of dollars on a site for a new railway station and you have one that was good for the better part of the nineteenth century and the beginning of the twentieth century and...
So, though I can tell you, there'll be a lot more detail and all those questions answered in that presentation in December.
Okay. What's going on with Converse Street? Anything you can discuss?
The middle school? Nothing yet, we're still developing the RFP. And I'm waiting too, to have the, the property lines re-deeded.
Now, speaking of that, you spent thirteen thousand dollars on surveying that?
It ended up, it ended up coming down to four thousand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none. Next is minutes, October 21st. Any comments? Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, was I at that one?
Yes, you were.
All right, just making sure.
Oh, I wasn't. I wasn't actually, I abstain. Okay, October 28th. Any comments? Or motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All business, we have ordinance. Which comes first, the public hearing or the...
Uh, public hearing.
Okay, we have a public hearing. What time is that advertised for?
If you want, we can sit on that and then have, Heidi needs to jump to another meeting, so if you wanna jump to...
All right, we need to, we need to hold off on that for a minute. Okay, we have, I'm gonna jump to new business resolution 2025-19, which is a vote to accept $263,000 grant for culvert replacement from the Division of Ecological Restoration. Heidi, our town planner is here. You wanna come up, Heidi? How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Good, thank you.
So, this grant is for the field data collection and preliminary design for two culverts on West Ware Road and Bacon Road that are severely undersized and degraded. I know that the Bacon Road culvert often washes out, making the Nenomessic Gun Club inaccessible. So, there was a temporary solution put in last winter because of how much rain we were getting and how much the road was washing out. So, this will be the first phase in a couple different phases for this project. And we're also a training site, so surrounding communities will send road managers and they'll have a meeting in Town Hall first, where DER will sort of give them a rundown as to what goes into meeting stream crossing standards and then use our project as a case study, so... Yeah.
How do we get, was there something that you had to do for us to get chosen as a training site?
So, it was just an extra box that I checked on the application. I think because we're right off the Mass Pike, it sort of made it a perfect spot for people in the area to come to, so...
That's great.
Nice.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept?
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Did you have another one too, Heidi?
Yeah, we do, back to back.
Okay. Just so you don't have to sit down, we'll...
Sure.
Do that. Okay, so we have resolution 2025-20, which is a vote to accept $433,000 for community one-stop-for-growth rural development grant for the wastewater treatment plant sewer siphon replacement design and engineering. And also, also here with Heidi on this is Matt. Matt Morris is here. There, yes, hi. Okay, go ahead.
So, this has been a few years coming. I know that we've applied a few years in a row for the one-stop for, to final design for the sewer siphon on Thorndike Street. It was a temporary siphon that was put in forty years ago, so at this point, it's somewhat of a ticking time bomb to, for the businesses there as far as if it fails, it would put a lot of different businesses in a really tough position and really stunts growth in that area. So, this will be a great first step towards improving the infrastructure on Thorndike Street, so...
I was just gonna say, this is Thorndike and Cheer, right?
Yep.
We're talking that one that we've been having issues with for...
Exactly, yep.
Four years since we applied for the grant.
Oh, I thought she said...
Heidi, you meant four years since we've originally applied for the grant, correct?
Yeah, it's just been a couple different years we've tried throwing a one-stop application in and see where it's stuck.
Yeah, no, and I'll just add on, like, this is very exciting news for Palmer. I don't want to under-sell this, this is huge. This is step one of a much bigger hopeful grant we received, because I think the project estimated cost for replacement of the siphon itself is around four to six million. So, hopefully, obviously, this is, hopefully, we get grant offset money to that. But again, this is 430,000 that we no longer need to assess to all of our ratepayers. So, it's a huge win for all the ratepayers in the town. So, I think Heidi, I think Matt, Ken, everyone who's involved in putting this project together. But it's a huge first step and a huge win for Palmer.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you all. Okay, do you have a motion to accept the grant in the amount of 430,000? Carl?
Second.
Jess? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Still not?
I think the resolution does have a typo in it though, so...
Yeah, it needs the, in the bottom section, the dollar about, right here. But it's okay, it's here. So, we can just fix that before it's signed. All right, we're gonna go to Lemonade Day recap. Julia Taylor?
This is James and Daisy and Giannis and... Hi, everybody.
Hi.
And you guys remember me from Lemonade Day. The kids were gonna pass out some lemonade key, or lemon keychains that we had made. Do you guys wanna give them out to the council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Nice.
These two were part of Lemonade Day and they actually had the top grossing stand. And I think they wanted to say a few words. Did you guys wanna talk at all? Or no? If not, it's okay. Okay.
Did you have, did you have fun?
Yeah.
Yeah? So, did you, you did your stand together?
Yes, we did.
Are you brother and sister?
Yes.
Okay.
And how much money did you guys make?
We made $531 total.
Wow.
Great.
Yours was in front of the library, right?
Um, no, it was in front of our house.
Okay, nice.
And what were you, you were selling lemonade?
Yeah. We had three different things. We had lemonade, eggs, and honey.
Wow.
Wow.
Wow. Diversity.
Yeah, that's cool.
They enjoyed Lemonade Day, everyone did. We are scheduled to do another Lemonade Day for Palmer on June of 2025. Since Lemonade Day, I reached out to the community and asked everyone to vote on a Lemonade Day mascot. Every town gets a chance to pick out their own name and then the kids were going to announce it to you guys. Do you wanna show that? So, Palmer's Lemonade Day mascot is going to be...
Lemonade.
So, next year, we'll have a mascot going around to lemonade stands. But we just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate you guys' support and help so, so much. We are so excited for next year and I hope for it to grow.
Yeah, Julia, can you, can you just outline the numbers? I know we had talked about changing a shift of the date, we think that's gonna grow the program?
Yes.
So, you just wanna highlight that for the council?
Yes, so for next year, we are going to have a two-week program right when school ends coordinating Saturdays. It's gonna be at the library, they've teamed up with us as well. And we're gonna hope to get more into the schools, just out into the community and make it grow as best we can.
Perfect. So, you guys gonna do it again next year?
Yes.
All right. Perfect.
Hey, you guys gonna make more money, right? Five hundred bucks, I might open up a stand myself.
Right. All five families would like to join next year as well. And then, yeah, it was awesome and fun and we're looking so forward to next year.
Well, thank you for, thank you Julia for bringing it to the community. I had never heard of it until you brought it forward, so thank you. And I'm glad you guys had fun. So, we'll see you next year, yeah.
And if you need, if you need for me to talk again, but I'll gear it down to a younger speech.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go back up to the public hearing. So, the public hearing is on the betterment for non-public roads ordinance. Is there anybody that wanted to ask any questions or provide any comments about this ordinance?
All the edits were made from the council discussions, the big two being the two-thirds vote and the $500 applicant fee, I guess for lack of better words, that'll be back up to the petition.
Okay. I didn't open the hearing, but, so I opened it at 6:48, thank you. Last call for comments. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing at 6:48. And now, we have the second reading of the ordinance and... I'm just gonna read the, that this ordinance will set forth the town of Palmer's requirements for multiple property owners to petition the town council to assess betterments to fund improvements to private ways open to public use. Public funds may not be used to make improvements to private ways. The assessment of betterments may allow multiple property owners to ensure that all properties benefited by improvements to a private way pay a fair, fair proportionate share of the cost of the improvement and allow the town to carry out the improvements without spending public funds. So, the next, we will, there's no comments, so this will move forward as it is written with the changes from our last meeting that Brad just identified. And then, we will vote this at our meeting in December. Okay, next, we have a vote to accept an anonymous donation of $5,000 to the council on aging to offset holiday party expenses. Do you have a motion to accept the donation?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Thank you to the anonymous donor.
Yes. So, next, we have resolution 2025-21, which is fiscal 25 budget amendments. Are you taking this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Obviously, if there's any questions, as long as the department heads here, they can answer them specifically. But the goal of this would be to, we had new money in new growth that we were able to utilize and offset some new expenses for, so you guys have the backup, I'll go over this quickly. But the goal is to move funds, the primary being to mail town animal control, to increase spay and neuter services, some unemployment insurance costs that were higher than anticipated, town council legal fees, town council professional development budget, facilities increased to the budget maintenance. With the new facilities director, I've been working on identifying different priority and needs for us and really anything we've come up with to date has about a $10,000 bill behind it. So, right now, we only have, I think, thirty thousand approved. This would double that and make it sixty. Five thousand is for building inspector supplies and professional development. The town planner, right now, is thirty-two and a half hours, this would give us funding to make that position thirty-seven and a half. Retiree health insurance went up about, I think, seven, over seven percent. We only had originally budgeted six percent, so this covers that balance. Ten thousand for private road maintenance. So, I know we had had discussions along the way about how we're funding that and how we would allocate that going forward. This puts money in right away to not only help cover the costs of what we already paid to date, but also private roads for the spring. We'd put fifty thousand in a reserve fund specifically for electricity use. As I mentioned originally in the FY25 budget, I thought our contract had expired and November of 2025, unfortunate contract, there was another page I did not have a file on in my files, I got it after the fact. It actually runs through November of 2026, so we have to pay the additional cost, there's no savings for FY25, so this will cover that for the town, school, and the library. But again, this is in reserve funds, so it'll come back to the council before we have to reappropriate, but that's where that holding spot will be. And we also put another hundred thousand in to reserve for ambulance services. So, as the council knows, Palmer Ambulance had stopped providing us ambulance service coverage as of October 31st. This money puts into play whether it's helping to cover Palmer ambulance service, or excuse me, Palmer Fire or a contracted service later on. This gives us money to have to offset that expense. So, more to come on that, but again, this is a storing money way to cover that as we go down the line.
Any questions? Okay, so do I have a motion to provide additional funds in the amount of $317,438 to the town budget? And the total amended budget will be forty-four million, six hundred and three dollars, six hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Make a motion.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, next, we have the tax classification hearing. Rachel? And we will skip it. Going forward, it would be helpful if you put the times on the agenda, just, okay? Okay.
We could jump to ARPA if you want.
Yep, that's where I'm going. All right, we have some resolutions from ARPA. Resolution 2025-22, nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars for the Thorndike Playground site improvements.
We could, yeah, I was gonna say, I hope there's information along with this, because didn't we just put a ton of money into Thorndike Playground?
Yep. Well, but there's issues. So, Matt, do you wanna, were you gonna talk about this?
Sure, if you got questions, of course.
Sure, just the backstory on what we're doing with the money.
Yes.
Yeah, just for...
Yeah, it is.
Sorry, I didn't dig that far down.
It is, but just give a high level.
Yeah, just real quick, at Thorndike, there's a few things, things that need improvement. First, I'll start with the drain that's in the center of the court that we use for the ice skating rink. It's not connected properly when it was built. So, have you, you guys have probably noticed over the last few years that when there's a heavy rain, it just kinda sits there. So, we're actually gonna take that drain out, put a new drain and daylight it over the canal. So, we're gonna fix that. The interior wall, the wallstone cap is always loose and the kids are throwing it around, so we're gonna get that old cap out, bring new cap in, make sure it's secured tightly. There's a few loose stones out on the exterior wall too, that we wanna make sure that they're glued down for safety reasons. After we fix the drain line, we're gonna steel coat the whole basketball court, repaint it and all those sidewalks. So, I think it'll freshen up.
Yeah.
Fix some of the things that...
Nice.
It'll look much better.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome.
Are we good?
Yep.
Make a motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, might as well stay there.
I was like, don't run it.
Resolution 2025-24 is a transfer of $39,240 for cemetery tree removal.
You skipped one?
Um, yeah, I think the next one's mulch.
Twenty-three.
OJ.
Oh, we'll just do the tree removal, then I'll go back.
Sure.
Tree removal. Cemetery, isn't that you too, Matt?
Yeah, I wanna get, quick over you.
Yeah, so this is, we, I think in 2021, the town voted, the council voted to get tree removal done at Oaknall. We still have a little bit more to finish in the back with trimming, I think there's like three or four in the middle of Oaknall that need to be removed. The rear of four-corner cemetery needs to be trimmed. And we have, I think it's one or two at Palmer Center Cemetery. These funds will allow us to continue the tree work that we started a few years ago.
Are the trees, so I, I understand tree trimming, so forget about that part, but the tree removal, are those trees that are dead?
Some of them are, yeah.
So, why would we be removing trees that aren't dead?
Oh, that are dead.
They are, oh, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, you said some, so...
You did say some.
If they're alive, we're trimming them, if they're dead, we're removing them.
Okay, so, we have, we have a bunch of trees that are dead?
Yeah, in Oaknall. It was part of the initial project, but we ran out of funding.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on that? Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 2025-23, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, again from ARPA for townwide playground mulch.
So, 2022, we allocated, or the town allocated, I think it was thirty-three thousand for five parks to be blown in mulch for the playgrounds. Since then, we did the rubber replacement at Three Rivers Common. So, that, that park is now eliminated, we have four that we do now, and this will cover the blown-in mulch for the four playgrounds, two at Legion, one in Bonneville, one in Thorndike. I'd also like to, you know, in the future, is actually get this on a capital plan. Replacement mulch should be done probably every three to five years. And we feel like we kinda scramble every couple of years, kinda get this funded somewhere, so...
Don't we have in the budget, isn't there like a line item for each park?
No.
If that, yes, there is, for maintenance. Or not every park, but for, I know Legion is definitely there for...
Well, like subcategories under the budget, but yes.
Yeah, this, well, I would, I would say this really falls in line with the capital item, because if you put that in your budget every year, right? You don't have that expense once every three years.
Oh, I got you, correct.
So, it just fits more in a capital project. But there's things we can do behind the scenes to ensure that we can comb the product to make sure that it resurfaces itself, to really extend that life to hopefully get five years out of it. So, hopefully, this will be not three, hopefully, we get closer to five, but again, there's a lot of variables in that.
Well, so what kind of mulch is it?
Blown-in wood mulch.
So, should we be looking at, and I don't know what the cost is, but should be looking at the cost of something that's more permanent?
We did, we, we had cost estimates from other stuff.
There was one...
Or like that rubber?
Mention that price right now.
Yeah, it was...
Just out of curiosity, I mean, Barbara asked, so...
I wanna, it was like nine, it was ninety, just for one park, which I believe...
One park was about a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, but how, but then how long does it last?
I'm not sure. About fifteen years.
Fifteen years?
Oh, that's not a long time.
For a hundred grand.
Matt, is the mulch treated with anything to...
Yeah, it's playground specs, yeah.
And it's safe for children and all that? Of course, it's gotta be. Start glowing green.
No splinters and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have resolution 2025-25, eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, again from ARPA funds for DPW compressor, or a compressor for the DPW?
Yes, so this compressor is, we had it all the way since 1982. The actual compressor where the air converter is made out of cast iron, so we couldn't, we couldn't weld it, we can't find replacement parts, so it's time for a new one, replacing a 1982 model. The motor's still good, it's a John Deere motor, we're gonna try to sell it maybe on, on public auction site or whatnot, but maybe we can recoup a few thousand off of that.
So, you're currently down?
We are down, we're actually borrowing from Monson tomorrow morning.
Oh, wow.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you're done.
That's it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Next is resolution 2025-26 from ARPA, forty-eight thousand dollars for Town Hall step flat platform replacement. Todd? Is Todd here? Yeah. So, he's come, is he come, okay.
He's not...
He's not making it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can pinch hit on this one.
Okay, yep.
So, this is an item that we've gone back and forth on, since I started here, people have flagged that there's been issues with the Town Hall steps and platform. We went out, we got three quotes, and this was really the lowest quote we ended up getting back. So, if you don't approve it here, it'd be on a capital plan to get expedited anyway.
Are we talking safety issues?
Yeah. It's these ones right here, we did temp fixes, this gives us a permanent, permanent fix of the problem. And some of the quotes we got to were closer to eighty, ninety thousand.
Is that full replacement, like full removal and full replacement?
Yep.
Is it the stairs and the platform?
Yes.
Stepping up to the stairs?
Yes.
I make a motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-seven from ARPA funds, forty-seven thousand three hundred and ten dollars for a ramp at the senior center. Ramp replacement.
So same thing. This was one issue that got flagged to me right away when I started. We had quotes going back at least two, if not three years that were in the sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollar range, so this is a state vendor contract. They'll come in and do all the work and we'll be good to go.
This is to replace the existing ramp that's already there, right?
Exactly.
The wooden one in the back?
Yep, which again, we've put temp fixes on it. I think, Matt, you went up, I think, like in the spring to put a temp fix on it, so it's about time we, we invest some money and get a permanent solution to it.
And the concrete is falling, there's holes, the railings are wobbly. It's time for replacement.
Exactly.
Make a motion.
Second.
Is it, and it's still gonna be a wood ramp?
No, it's not.
Old concrete.
Oh, is it? It was replaced?
Yep.
I thought it was wood at one point. Maybe it was. No, that's fine. Maybe I'm thinking the school over here, because we were over there recently. Yeah.
We did get three recent quotes. This was the lowest of the three.
I don't know what else I brought in. So what's the, so the ramp is concrete that you walk on, and then what's the, what are the, what's the sides made out of?
Cinder block.
It's cinder block?
Yeah, that's what's crumbling.
Were you talking about the railings, the metal railings?
I'm talking about the railings. That's what I'm asking. Is it gonna be?
Metal railings, yep.
So it's gonna be metal?
Yep.
Okay.
I thought you were saying like the whole thing was concrete, like the side. That's why I was like, what?
Subway.
I, I, I wasn't sure.
Just out of curiosity, is it compliant with ADA as it is right now? Well, I mean, back in the day, things have changed, so I mean, it's old, so I'm just.
The only thing right now would probably be the blacktop patches that we put in.
Gotcha. So better off to fix it, yeah.
It's time to fix it.
You know though, it's like great and all that. Sure.
Understood. That question wasn't loaded. It was more or less like, I know that things have changed over the years, so did it become non-compliant over the years? Yeah, and now we're just getting it up to code, which is another reason why we should do it on top of the safety concerns.
Did I have a motion in a second?
Yep.
One question, same contractor doing both ramps?
Yes, I believe so.
Well, one, one is a ramp and one is a step, or steps. Baker Mason is doing the.
That's right, the, the contract, yeah. So one's, one's off state bid, which we still got our quotes for. Finnegan came in lower than the state bid.
You good on that, or more questions?
Because the bids were so close to one another, I was just wondering.
Yeah, no, they're separate. We did get a quote from the vendor who is the lowest on the town hall step platform replacement for the council on aging, and they were at, I think, fifty-five or sixty thousand.
Okay. Okay. So I did have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you all set? Chris?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. You voted yes? Okay, no, you're good. Okay. So now it is seven oh five, so I'm gonna go back to the tax classification hearing. Rachel? And Mike? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
That's too bad.
Whenever you're ready, you can start.
Yep.
So, welcome everyone to the FY twenty-five tax classification hearing. So each year we get to determine the tax rate, and the financial team works really hard on this all year long, so I'd like to take a few minutes to introduce that team. And throughout this presentation, you're gonna learn how the Board of Assessors gathers, interprets and utilizes the information by the financial team, provided by the financial team to determine the actual tax rate. So it's a team effort, together with the town manager, town council, the town accountant, tax collector, treasurer and the Board of Assessors. We all contribute various different tasks throughout the year, all coming to this point. I won't read it verbatim. This will be available on the. Oh shoot. It'll be on the website for everyone. It went away.
The TV too?
Connected.
No, I think the computer shut off or reset, is it?
It's still on.
Check device power. Says. Got a hammer?
A bigger one.
There it is, we're back.
On Main Street.
Don't move it. I'm not touching, no, the wires.
You're doing someone's driveway on Main Street.
Okay, so step one in the process is property classifications. We've got to determine what the properties are in town, whether it's real or personal property. Real property is anything that's permanently attached to the land and the land itself, and that gets broken down into four categories. We have residential, commercial, industrial and open space. Personal property is anything that's movable and not permanently attached to the land or a building. That was, is not within a primary residence, so examples of that would be like your computers in a business, dentist's chair, furniture, cash register, stuff like that. So once we've got the properties classified, step two would be to value what they're worth for taxation purposes. So we determine the fair cash value of each property by conducting a comprehensive analysis of the real estate sales. We study the rental market for income properties, and then we perform hundreds of property inspections annually to ensure that our data is accurate. This year alone, we did a full reval on all personal property in the community, so that was quite an undertaking. So we did a visit, re-list of the entire community for that class. Once we've determined the values, they get sent to the Department of Revenue or Division of Local Services for approval. And you can see here the comparison from this year to last year. Fairly even across the board when you look at the different classes, single family, condominiums, two families, three families and land. The biggest increases that we're seeing this year in condominiums and three families, which is apart from the norm, it's traditionally the single families that we see the biggest rise in the values. Overall, it was about eleven point four, eight, nine percent increase. It's come down slightly since the initial steep increase in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Commercial, industrial and personal properties also did increase, and their average is about ten point four, three percent. This chart's a little misleading. Personal property did not actually go down, so I have two bars at the end. We shifted this year all of our solar pilot agreements into local receipts, so they're not gonna be billed through personal property taxation anymore. So when I first ran these numbers, it showed a negative value or drop in the value, which is just not actual, because just by shifting, we didn't lose any revenue. It just is now gonna reflect in a different place. So I put it back in for that fourth column, so you could actually see what the actual increase in value is in the overall personal property class. And that was right around ten percent. We did also adopt the local option of twenty-five hundred dollars this year, so we did lose accounts. So even with that loss, we still gained about ten percent in the overall value in that personal property class. Step three is new growth, so every year we have to track what's new in Palmer. So new growth is an increase in assessed value over a prior year resulting from changes like new construction, major renovations, additions, new buildings, new building lots, exempt properties being sold and becoming taxable. So throughout the year, we have to keep track of all those things during our inspections and then report that again to Division of Local Services for final approval. And then because of Proposition Two and a Half, new growth factors into what our maximum levying will end up being at the end of the year. This year, new growth's total value was thirty-four million five hundred and nine thousand five hundred and thirty-one, and that's total tax dollars of growth, five hundred and ninety-one dollars, eight hundred and thirty-eight cents. And that's an overall increase of thirty-three percent over last year's new growth, so. So it's, that's a decent new growth to be seeing. A lot of this because of COVID and stuff is some older growth that they get captured in more of a lump sum, so that is gonna play some part of it in doing a full re-list of the personal property. Steps four through six will be the financial end. Throughout the year, revenues are collected and invested. The needs of the community are established and projects are planned. An annual operating budget is determined and then approved. Step seven, we determine what the tax levy is gonna be. This is the amount needed to be raised through taxation to cover the town's budget for the year. So you have your total budget, which is gonna be not just what the town council budgets, but it's also, we have other expenses, like state expenses that we have to pay. Estimated receipts would be any income coming in for like fees, permit fees, all different fees that are collected throughout the, the year from the community, the taxes that are paid and all that.
State aid.
Hmm?
State aid.
State aid, yeah. So we have state that comes in on both. They give it and they take. And then we end up with an ultimate tax levy, which is what we need to cover all those bills. Step eight, we have to calculate a maximum allowable levy, so this is because of Proposition Two and a Half. The law places two constraints on the amount of property taxes that a city or town can levy, so that we can't levy more than two and a half percent of the total full cash value of all taxable property in the community, and that's called the levy ceiling. And then the, a community's allowable levy for fiscal year called the levy limit cannot exceed more than two and a half percent of the maximum allowable levy limit for the prior year plus certain allowable increases. So this is where the new growth comes in, so new growth, and then there's a few other things that can come into play, but new growth's the biggest one. So that gets added to the two and a half percent, and then that becomes your maximum allowable levy. So this next slide kinda shows you the formula and how that's broken down. Again, if you wanna look closely at these, it will be on the websites. It's can be a complicated concept to grasp. But anyways, the FY twenty-five levy, as you can see, is twenty-four thousand, twenty-four million two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. And our maximum allowable levy is twenty-four that million, two hundred thousand sixty-seven, five hundred and forty-four dollars. So that's leaving an excess capacity of three thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents. The excess capacity is the leftover amount that could have been spent by the town council or the community but was stopped. So we've established the types of properties in Palmer. We've determined the fair cash value of the taxable property. New growth has been captured. Revenues have been collected. The needs of the community and the government have been established. An operating budget is approved, a levy amount is determined, and a maximum allowable levy is calculated. This information combines to determine the annual tax rates. So this year, our projected tax rate is sixteen forty-eight. So that is a decrease over the current tax rate of seventeen fifteen. And that is subject also to final approval by the DLS. So what's the impact on your tax bill? So I use kind of a mid-range property value here. So in twenty twenty-four, this property was valued at two oh three six, and then it went up to two twenty-six for FY twenty-five. As you can see, it does have an increase to the tax bill of about two thirty, two seventy-four. So you can kind of gauge about where your tax bills will be going based off your personal value.
Is that the actual average single family ta, home value in Palmer?
This is taken from an actual property, those numbers.
Okay, is that the average of?
No, no, no. The average, I wanna say it's two sixty-eight.
Okay.
Right now. I, I didn't put it in the presentation, but I looked at the numbers.
Okay.
This slide is provided by the tax accountant, and it breaks down where your tax dollars go when you pay your tax bill. So a little small, and I encourage you, if you're interested, it's really a fascinating little graph that shows the largest portion of the bill that you pay for your property tax goes to the Palmer Public Schools. And then it goes from there. Employee benefits will come in number two, and then there's several other small categories. And it really breaks down what percent of your tax bill actually goes towards each of those individual things, so. If you're ever curious and wanna see that, that's there for you. Values by class this year, you can see the total value of the town. And then I'm showing this because this kind of shows the breakdown of how Palmer is being carried for the tax revenue. The residential class is at eighty-three percent. And the chip class, which is the commercial, industrial and personal property class, is sixteen point two percent. So basically what this is saying is that eighty-three percent, the residential class is carrying eighty-three percent of the levy. So they're covering the majority of that levy. This is more just for informational purposes. I thought it was an interesting display to show the tenure history of the financial trends. So I've got here the assessed property values, tax rates, amounts to be raised and new growth trends. Not quite pertaining to this, but I thought it was quite interesting. Step nine, and this is what we're here for tonight, is to determine how this levy is gonna be shared amongst all the taxpayers. So we have a single tax rate where everyone is taxed at the same rate. A split tax rate shifts more of the tax burden to the commercial, industrial and personal property classes. There's a residential exemption, which shifts the tax burden within the residential class. And then there's a small commercial exemption, which shifts the burden within the chip class. So a single rate versus split rate. A single rate, everyone is taxed at the same rate. This option keeps Palmer competitive for new business. Relocation, it maintains the commercial, industrial and personal property values and provides stability for existing businesses in Palmer. If you were to split the rate, it shifts more of the burden to the commercial, industrial and personal property classes, relieving the residential tax burden. And this option could cause businesses to seek other areas to conduct operations. It could also hinder the prospects of attracting new businesses to Palmer. And this illustrates the impacts, so if you, I give four, three alternatives to a single tax rate. You can see it's very little savings, but it's a big hit on the commercial, industrial and personal properties for very little savings for the residential. So long-term generally is the consensus that it's just not a good thing for a small community with a small chip class. If we have, you know, a large city with a large percentage of the chip class, this is an option that can work, because it becomes a little more evenly split, and it's not as big a hit on that chip class. But in a scenario in Palmer, it's, it's generally not recommended. And the residential and small commercial exemptions. The residential exemption shifts more of the levy burden onto the non-owner occupied residential properties. This exemption is used successfully in large cities and resort communities with mainly seasonal residents. So you'll see this in like an Antarctic, Martha's Vineyard, that type of place. Doesn't generally work in a community structured like Palmer. Small commercial exemption. It's granted on properties that are occupied by a small business that is valued less than a million dollars and has fewer than ten employees. Despite its name, the owner of the business doesn't actually receive the exemption. It's the owner of the property, so unless they're one in the same, it's really not a small business exemption. It's more of a small, a property owner of a small business. All right. So the recommendations of the Board of Assessors, the Board recommends that the town council adopts a single tax rate for FY twenty-five, and they also recommend a no vote on the residential exemption and a no vote on the commercial exemption. And that is it? Any questions?
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, that was awesome.
All right, so this is a kind of a public hearing, so any questions from the public?
So reassessments.
Can you, Dave?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, can you just get up so that people at home can't hear you?
Dave Golden, Farragone Avenue. So were reassessments done again?
We do reassessments every year.
Every year.
So there's what's called interim adjustments for four years, and then the fifth year, we do a restart application.
Has been said on the news and in multiple news outlets that residential housing has leveled, and yet we're seeing an increase in our assessments.
So we look, our data is about a year behind. We're looking at the previous year's data. So we look at the sales that occurred in twenty-three to determine FY twenty-five. So we're always a little behind, so we're actually usually assessed lower than current market value, because we're using old data. Does that make sense?
Maybe. It might be the opposite.
Well, in a turn market, it could be the opposite, absolutely.
But at some point, Rachel, but at some point, that adjusts, it corrects itself along the line. It just is, it's always, right now, the way we process it, we're behind.
Like, I'm not looking at today's sales to determine the tax rate. I have to, I have to look back at the previous year.
Is that how it's done all over?
All over, across the state.
Yeah, that's state law, not local.
Correct.
But also, you are right. So right now, as things are leveling, we're still looking at when things were going like this. And then we'll catch up with that. But then what happens if things started going up again? We wouldn't, you wouldn't see that in like the first year. You know what I mean? So every, prices go crazy this year. We're not gonna, we wouldn't catch up with that. Right. So it all, it all ends up leveling out, but it's just because of the way the state does it.
Right. And we're watching those trends. We watch those trends. So we do have a little leeway. So if we see things are spiking, 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 we're gonna go as close to a hundred percent fair cash value. If we see it's starting to level, then we may go down to like ninety-five percent, because we do have a little allowance of either direction. So those are things that we are constantly watching.
Can I ask one other question?
Absolutely.
Are the Lake Thompson lakefront homes their own village again? They were separated from the town in the assessments that were done two years ago?
They weren't separated from the town.
Yeah, they were. You took the whole town and assessed the values of the property, and then you took the Lake Thompson lakefront homes.
Classified neighborhood.
Right. So why aren't some of the estates classified neighborhoods also?
Well, there are different neighborhood codes, so there's not, they're not classified like under a waterfront. But we do have different codes for different neighborhoods.
But you took all the other homes in the whole town of Palmer, that last, two years ago, I believe it was,
Yeah.
and assessed them as one. And then you took the Lake Thompson lakefront residence homes and assessed them separately than that. And I know you're gonna say, location, location, location. But some of those other locations, like the Breton Estates and the other estates that are High Meadow, those homes are worth much more than the homes and are selling for much more than the homes on Lake Thompson. And yet they're still classified with the whole town. I don't understand that.
They're not truly, because they have class, there are codes for neighborhoods. So we have like neighborhood one, neighborhood two, and then we have three. Yours got separated out under a unique category as waterfront, because it was a land value that had to be adjusted. So there are, there are different ways that we look at the values for different neighborhoods. So we definitely take into consideration, there's a lot of fine tuning, and I'm new here, so I don't know all the little ins and outs and that stuff, and I'm kind of coming up abreast on. But there's definitely neighborhood codes. So I mean, I'm not gonna take a home that's sitting on Breton Estates and have it on Main Street. They're not gonna be valued the same, because they're different neighborhoods.
Okay, because at that last meeting.
Do you understand that?
I do, but at that last meeting, you had said that the whole town was taken.
Correct.
As one, and then Lake Thompson.
So we do like master appraisal, but there's also a fine tuning that is in there. I mean, it's a very complicated database that has like different numbers and values associated for all different things. And there's so many things, and that's why our data accuracy is so critical. Because so many elevent, elements come into it, but neighborhood is definitely a big part of it. So like I said, if I took that house on from Breton Estates and I placed it on Main Street in my current system, as it is right now, it's gonna be valued different, because there's neighborhood codes. So there's, there's all different ways that value is looked at from so many different angles.
Do we each houses look separately?
Depending, yeah, depending on where it is. I mean, if there's a uniqueness, we may have, they may have topography on a particular lot that's really bad, or wetlands that are really bad. We, you know, like, so every property, that's when we go out physically and look at every property, that's what we're looking for. What's unique about this particular property that we may need to adjust?
You know, we have a site index. Of the highest ones are seven, and there's fours and threes. So wherever, if you lived on, I don't wanna mention anything, but if you lived someplace that has a site index of four, it would value, it would show the price.
Values it in.
But if you put that house on a site index seven, like High Meadows Estates, it makes a difference. It's according to the, it all, it all boils down to sales, wherever that house is. In High Meadows Estates, you take all them sales, and that's what you get, that's how you get your site. If you were going to Sunset Acres, you know what I mean? So you take all them sales, and the tax rate generally is sales. That's, that gives you the tax rate. So if your house sells for a million dollars, you're gonna be taxed.
Well, we're not gonna go back to that. But here's two, here's two, here's two, here's two lemons. Here's two lemons. They're exactly the same, correct? They do. So let's just pretend. This one's on Main Street. Pick any, whichever village you want, and this one's in Breton Estates. Okay? Everything, they're the same lemon. This lemon sells for three hundred and fifty thousand, and this lemon sells for four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
The other one was built better, too.
The only, the only difference between these two lemons is where the house is. And that's what she's saying.
Right.
And that's how you determine. So I understand where you're going. I don't wanna go back to the past, but there was, they did, there is, lakefront property is treated a certain way. Because if, if this is, if this is on the lake and this is in Breton Estates, and this one sells for a million dollars and this one sells for five hundred thousand dollars, what she's saying is, the difference is, someone's paying, willing to pay another five hundred thousand dollars for the same house, because it has, it's lakefront or it has lake access. And so that's how they have to look at their job. That, that's my example of the lemons this evening. So I, that I can't answer, but that, that's how, you'd have to ask, you'd have to, I don't have that answer. But that's really, that's the whole reason of why properties are assessed differently, because of the location. Okay.
So the quick takeaway of this is tax rates going down, but unfortunately, values went up.
Well, yeah, the tax rate doesn't really mean anything.
No, I'm just saying, for people at home, right? The great thing is, tax rates went down, so when everybody says, I got my tax rate, my tax bill came in, I'm paying more money, my taxes went up. No. Your taxes didn't go up, your taxes went down, but the property values went up.
Yeah, your taxes still went up.
It's, that's all cute.
Tax bill went up.
I wouldn't get too wrapped up. I would not, like, let's, let's time out here. Do not get wrapped up in the tax rate.
Yeah, tax rate.
Do not, it does not mean.
The bottom line is, no matter what, it's never gonna change. Because if the, the value of your house goes up, the tax rate goes down, but you're still paying the same. If it goes down, they raise the tax rate higher to get the same amount of money. So the bottom line is, they're always gonna get the same amount of money they need to run the town and this and that, no matter what. You're never gonna, they're never gonna sit here and say, you know what, this year we thought would be nice, and not raise everything to two point five, because we have to, or whatever. The bottom line is, you're just gonna keep digging in your pocket.
There's a direct correlation between the tax rate and the assessed value of the property.
Exactly.
So yes, so even though the tax.
If it's really low, the tax rate goes up. If you, if the house is selling for more, the tax rate theoretically goes down, because they're making more, because that house is worth more. Correct?
Yes. Unless, unless there was an absolute, if someone had a fire in their home or something like that, their taxes would go down, because their value would go down. But in most cases, your value's either gonna stay pretty consistent, or right now, because of the.
We're just super simplified. We know it's way more difficult.
Well, no, I mean, but it has to be simplified, so, so that, but because of the market we're currently in, and the market that they are still in for this year's assessments, there's still, there is still a slight adjustment in values based on the slides that she showed. Okay. Anybody else? No?
No.
Okay, so we need to take, so I think, we need to also take a vote on the open space discount. Yeah, it's okay, I got it.
I was gonna say, I didn't put it in, because we don't have open space, so.
Right, but I think we do. Just, I don't, I don't want you to find out that we did, so we're gonna take it anyway, okay? Okay, so the first vote will be to adopt a single tax rate. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Second is to vote to not adopt a residential exemption. Motion?
Make a motion.
Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is to vote to not adopt the small commercial exemption. Motion by Matt, second by Jess. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to not adopt the open space discount.
Make a motion.
Motion by Jess, second by Matt. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Did you need us to sign something tonight? Don't you have to upload the form with our signatures?
I'll go and then just run it back over.
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect.
Thank you. That was a great presentation.
Barbara, I think my lemon is worth just as much as your lemon.
It's all in the eye of the beholder.
That's right. I love my lemon.
Okay. Next is, we have some updates from Tony Cruz, De Cruz, De Cruz, from Ty and Bond. I knew that. As soon as I read it, I'm like, that's not right.
Yeah.
Okay, Tony, did you wanna come up, or who's making the pres, who's making the presentation?
I don't have a presentation.
Oh, who's speaking? Let's go with that. Okay.
So just wanted to give you an update on the two projects that are ongoing at the wastewater treatment plant. The first of which is the, a de-watering improvement project for a centrifuge. And the other one is a UV improvement, which will, in essence, eliminate the gaseous chlorine system that they use for disinfection purposes. We've updated, we've advanced the design to a point where we're prepared to go out to bid for a thirty B procurement on the equipment. We have a tentative schedule for both projects, and they somewhat run concurrently, with the finished date sometime in late twenty twenty-six, with us going out to bid in December of this year, twenty twenty-four. So about a two-week, a two-year process from the start of the bidding through construction. We've advanced the design enough to develop some OPCs on those, with the sludge de-watering improvements, a centrifuge coming in at about two point two eight million, and the UV disinfection coming in at about two point seven two million dollars. We did take a look, get the beneficial improvements in the payback periods on the centrifuge. Back in late September, we gave the town a summary of what the current sludge disposal costs are, and what the proposed disposal cost would be in the future with the centrifuge. And just, just to summarize it really quickly, it's a two-page document with a bunch of numbers. We assume that the cost of the sludge disposal would not increase year over year, which we know that is not true. Over the past two years, the increase was seven and a half percent, Kenny, I believe, right? Thereabouts. So since we can't predict the future, we don't know what the cost of sludge disposal, we assume it's gonna stay flat. And depending on how efficient the centrifuge is, it could be twenty-three percent sludge solids, or twenty-five. And assuming it's twenty-three, the payback period, I believe, is fourteen years? I'm trying to catch my notes. I'm trying to catch up to my notes. Yeah, it's fourteen years at twenty-five percent de-watered cake. If it's only twenty-three percent de-watered cake, it'd be about sixteen years. That would be the payback period. But there would be year-over-year savings. Right now, the average cost for disposal is at four hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred. Correct? If we get it down to about twenty-three percent, it drops the annual disposal cost to about three hundred and eleven thousand. And that twenty-five percent cake sludge, about two hundred and eighty-six thousand. So that is a quick synopsis of where those two projects are. Assuming funding is in place, we would go out to bid with thirty B procurement this December, with a completion, as I indicated, sometime in late twenty twenty-six.
Barb.
Yeah.
Centrifuge. Haven't we been talking about that for years now?
Yeah, I, go, go ahead, yeah.
Like, I thought we allocated money for this project.
You're reading my mind. Yeah. And now we're asking for five million?
Yeah. I mean, the UV thing I know is new. I know we were talking about that for future improvements, because of the new mandates coming down and things like that, and we'd have to.
If I may, I believe the centrifuge was tied in with the roof project at one point.
Right.
But I don't believe you borrowed anything on the construction of that. I think you only borrowed for engineering.
I thought we moved money around, if anything. We did something with the centrifuge, I know we did. Because I know there was the muffin grinder, right? We did that. And it could have sworn we did something with centrifuge. That's why I was like, wow, it's coming back around.
I think it was, as he said, with the roof, and it just never went through.
I don't know. I think, I think we need to go back and look if we've already authorized some of this money, because the whole thing with the sludge and, you know, putting that in place and getting rid of the water and that.
Yeah, rings a bell.
That, all that was discussed, and I know that came before the council, and I'm pretty sure that we did approve.
It was at one point, like I said, it was part of.
I think it got shot down.
But we were talking about the roof for years, too, and then it got, right.
I think it got shot down.
It was decoupled, but I don't have that for fact.
What do we borrow for that we borrowed the money before we should have?
The boiler, I thought it was.
No, that was, that was the roof.
Was it the centrifuge?
Then there was a little.
So maybe that's what it was.
A little issue with the.
Like I said, I think you borrowed it, and you either sent it back.
We paid it back.
It got squashed.
Right, but that's the whole thing, is we have an authorization.
Yeah, we just, like, the borrowing was internally within our offices done.
Yeah, that's why I'm like, wait a second.
Could we go back to the project thing here? Of, so this UV system, so all of this is supposed to gonna be done by twenty twenty-six, is all you're saying? I just, in reading this, it's kinda disturbing when you read what they've written down here, why they're switching is because of the chlorine gas, and it explains how the pipes are getting old and deteriorating. And the real disturbing thing that, for me, that, I don't, is that the town is not, where is it? Extremely safety risk for employees, I would assume and hope that they have masks or something if something did happen down there for them, to protect them from.
We're not certified to wear the SCBA's.
So obviously, that's something that, but it, it's just disturbing that we're using this, and there's no safety features for the workers, or the town, as it reads, is currently, is not currently equipped to respond or handle response from potential chlorine gas leak in addition to plants chlorine. In addition to plants, chlorine gas lines are beginning to deteriorate. If we move ahead, there would be no need to replace these lines. I just find that whole paragraph very disturbing.
You have a 40 some ideal plant and that was the original system.
But what's disturbing is now, they don't, you don't have masks. Let's say you have a leak-
We have a respirator that's small or indeed, but Palmer Fire or Three Rivers Fire are not certified to come into a full-blown gas leak and do it. We have to get Springfield's asthma team to come in. And if that gas ever did leak that room, which is one cylinder did rupture, whichever way the wind's blowing, it's, it's gonna blow and it's gonna wipe out everything in its path.
I just think, in saying what I'm saying, this definitely needs to be put on the radar and something needs to change. As far as safety-wise, whatever the town needs to do to at least pretend we're trying to do something. You know, it's, it, it's just, you, if you read that paragraph and that doesn't bother you, there's something wrong. Especially for the workers, you know? And I'd say I'm sorry, but I'm not.
Thank you.
That's all.
And one more thing I want to add about that centrifuge, while we're on the subject of that, our belt press is 25 years old. It's at the end of its life. So if we don't move forward with the centrifuge, we're gonna be having to move forward with another belt press within the next probably three to five years.
Is the belt press in the centrifuge?
It's two different technologies that do the same thing.
Oh, okay.
Dewaters the sludge. A belt filter press, I think you're currently getting what, 14%? 16 maybe. 14 to 16. Centrifuge gets you 23 to 25.
Dewatering is what he's saying.
So you're not-
It's just two different ways to do it.
Yeah, two different technologies. And the existing belt filter press would remain as a backup system for maintenance purposes. Right, but the centrifuge is entering the end of its life too. So if we wouldn't move forward with the centrifuge, we probably have to move forward with another belt press.
We already voted to support the centrifuge, 2,225,000. So we already did that. So that's what we're saying is-
Yeah, I don't think there's question about us, our support for the project. It was like-
Because that was, that was well over a year ago that we-
Yeah, I've got emails all the way back to 2020.
Well, this was, we voted this on June 13th of 2022.
So the only one you haven't voted on, I assume, is the UV disinfection improvements.
Correct, because that was something new that we had been starting recently, talking about future improvements to the plant. Yes. It's been on the radar though. It's not a surprise.
No, I mean, we're, we're well into the design.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely not a surprise, yes.
Tom, is there something you said about bringing the projects together?
I feel like we might have done this one too. So Tony, when you had given me that detailed list of everything that was outstanding when we were in transition here, was the, was the UV on there?
The UV design was, yes.
So was the design that we-
Yeah, so we're under contract for the design.
Okay, so-
It's not a, I think what needs to be done is the borrowing for the construction phase. Because the design, we're already under contract.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. I don't know the sludge part. I remember very well that we already did that. This one, I don't know. But what, you know, this, the, the next vote was looking to do a first reading of 5 million dollars.
Sounds like it's probably not five.
Right, so what, what was the, what was the breakdown that you just gave? Because I wasn't writing that down.
I think they both add up to 5 million.
Right, but, okay.
The sludge watering of the centrifuge was 2,280,000. And the UV disinfection was 2,720,000.
It's, it's five.
It's five. That's the 5 million.
Okay, so it's just the 2.7?
2.7.
Well, no, because the centrifuge is now-
Now short 60 grand.
So on 7/19/23, there was a mini-report that came out and in there, it has a note in here, currently being designed for the ultraviolet decontamination. The design started back in April 23. I am expecting the first drafts back later this year to evaluate the ability to proceed with the project. Similar to the centrifuges, this technology is safer, more cost-effective, but it is very expensive at over approximately 1 million. That was just a note from back then.
Did, did bond council write this loan authorization?
Yes.
And back in 2022, you told us that belt press was dying. I have your memo here. 2022? In March of 2022?
Even more so, right?
Well, he's looking at that. What's going on with the thing that's under the river that you guys were supposed to do, like, three different options to see which was the most cost-effective? Because that was quite a while ago. Sure, and that was quite a while ago and when it was brought forward to us, it was like, that was like very high concern for a lot of people and now it's been probably at least a year or more, probably more, and we haven't heard a word.
Yep, so we did do an initial evaluation of the structure itself. The DPW went out and actually put up some jersey barriers to eliminate vehicle traffic over the structure because the majority of deterioration is the roof portion of that structure. We developed a scope and fee to come in and TV those lines. There's three lines that leave that structure go underneath the Ware, Ware River, is it Kenny? To another structure off, on the other side by the treatment. The structure at the treatment plant site is actually in really good condition. You know, it's 48 years old and it looks like it's 10 years old. It's in great condition. The, the one on the, the Three Rivers side is in need of attention. The lines that go into that structure are also RCP, so they're also concrete pipe. We believe that the deterioration is caused by hydro, hydrogen gas releasing out of the sewers. Hydrogen sulfide gas, and that's causing the deterioration of the concrete. So what we've had the town do is we want to be able to go to the lines leading up to the structures all the way back here by like Pathfinder. The other line comes in over by American, American vets through their parking lot. And we want to go in and see what the conditions of those lines are to either potentially increase the scope of the project. So when we TV the lines under the river, we would also TV the lines that lead into the structure from the pump stations. So I, we owe a site visit in the next couple of weeks and then we can finalize the scope. It'll be mostly outside services. There'll be a camera crew that's gonna come in with robotics to be able to TV the condition of that pipeline and then come up with some options.
Planning board meeting?
But no, I don't believe there's been any funding or anything appropriated for that.
Are you guys here for a council meeting or a planning board meeting?
Planning board.
Yeah, wrong meeting.
Police station. Police station.
Across the parking lot.
You're welcome. No one usually wants to come to our meetings, so it was a giveaway.
It was tipped off.
Okay, so-
So it's, it's underway. It would probably be, say, before the holidays, you'd have a scope and fee on that.
Okay.
But we don't know how big it's going to be yet.
Okay.
And I don't believe any funding has been set aside for that.
I was gonna say, enough that sewer surplus is gonna handle or?
No.
No.
We did, we just appropriated the money for the, the work, your engineering costs, I believe, to come up with three different, I think, if I remember. It was two other, it was, I don't think it was you that made the presentation on that. I thought it was, it was somebody else, I think. Yeah, I thought it was a woman also. And I thought it was three, there was three different alternatives of what could potentially happen and you guys were gonna look into those three alternatives and then come back to us as to what, what the recommendation was.
We haven't done that. We're not under contract for anything. We haven't-
Then, okay, I absolutely know that that was-
Need to get the ball rolling and-
Yeah. I absolutely-
Kind of-
I don't know.
I mean, I have no idea what that would be.
It was definitely the thing under the water. Yeah, so we need to go back and look at that also because-
Were there three options for a siphon, Barbara? There was three options made for a siphon on- On 32. On Thorndike. On Thorndike Street.
Maybe-
No, Thorndike Street?
There's three options on Thorndike Street.
This was the, this, I'm pretty sure was the issue over here.
We haven't come up with any options, to be honest with you.
Then we need to look at, we need to look back at that too, to see what that was because-
We haven't, we're not under contract for anything.
The siphon is what we just got the grant money for.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't the, it wasn't the siphon. And we'll, I'll go back to like meeting minutes and, and try to figure that out.
Interesting.
Okay, yeah, well, I guess we're waiting for you and you don't know we're waiting for you.
I know you're waiting for me because I'm in contact with Ken, so that is a, that is a definite, I know you're waiting for us.
Okay, well, we'll figure that one out too.
We should just have to do a little more field work.
Okay, that's fine, okay. All right, anything else you wanted to share tonight?
Congratulations on the two grades.
That's great.
So, are you, you're not working on the roof then, are you?
Yes.
How is the progress of the roof going while you're here?
90% done? Probably 95%. We're getting the punch list together now. It's probably, it's not gonna get done before the snow flies.
So you're still gonna need your umbrellas.
No, no. We have the rain, so I can't tell you that either.
That's true.
Thursday. You know it's gonna now, the end of the week, right?
We're almost there, but it'll be springtime before it's on the record.
Awesome.
The backer should be in by the end of next week or the following week, the new backer. The boiler should be online hopefully by next Wednesday, if not the following week.
Good. Are you guys overseeing the roof project?
Yes.
So you're the one that's like-
On top the roof.
The punch list and making sure everything's done?
We're not, it's not full-time, but it's part-time. There are multiple occasions.
So you're on top of?
Literally, literally on top.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tony.
All right, so we are not going to, we're gonna have to postpone the, the first reading on the next agenda item until we get some additional information. And I think that's all the agenda items.
But that could be a special meeting, right? Because I think Tony said something about getting out December, right?
Well, this is-
It's out in December.
Well, they, they can go forward with the centrifuge part, right.
Well, that, that was a little confusing. I just want to clear it up right now. The goal was to bid them together, so you get economies of scale on that. I do think we could still move forward with the bid, we just don't award it.
The only thing this, this does is that you have, because you have to do three readings. If you do four, we can still go out to bid, we just cannot award.
Exactly.
Until the town appropriates the funds.
Yeah, the problem is, and I, I mean, I'm not saying this is gonna happen, but it doesn't make sense to put a bid out and then have us not support part of that project because then you just, you have a, you have a bid document that's useless.
What we can do, Brad, is just redo the schedule based on-
Yeah, push it back a month or two.
Push it back a month or two to allow the readings to occur.
Can we not have special meetings for, to move the readings along? Have to be once a month for the council or can you not have, say, two meetings in the month to, to move it along?
You need enough time, I think. Marley's already-
Seven days for a public hearing.
Right.
What?
Seven-day notice for a public hearing.
Okay, so you have your seven days, you have a reading and-
I'd have to look at the charter, but I think the, the public hearing has to happen, I think, on a regularly scheduled meeting.
That's the question I'm asking.
And we already have two people that aren't gonna be here at our next meeting, so one more and any borrowing authorizations is a two, two-thirds vote and so we already don't have two-thirds, two-thirds here.
People, isn't there not still a way, like, say I was out of town, that you could be on the Zoom type?
Yep.
You know, case you're running into that scenario to, that would be the, the solution to that problem.
If people are available, but the past several times when people are traveling for work, they don't have availability.
Okay, I'm just putting it there so it's in everyone's mind.
The issue right now is I am not convinced that the loan authorization was approved and looked at by bond counsel.
Right.
And so it doesn't make any sense to do a first reading if that is not the case. It's also not accurate because it, it has the, the sludge de-watering system in it and we need to confirm, but my understanding is that we already took a vote for that, so-
Right, just needs to be researched and figured out where we are.
So, yeah, so I don't feel comfortable moving forward with that tonight. Okay. So, I mean, I can definitely schedule a meeting as soon as we have that information and then hopefully, you know, but also next week is Thanksgiving.
Well, it will be, no matter what. Next week will be Thanksgiving.
It will, but I don't think, I don't think there'll be enough time to schedule a meeting, is what I'm saying. Yeah, so, okay. All right, so I think that's it. Again, that's it for the agenda. Subcommittee reports, I don't believe there are any. Town managers report.
First, I want to thank everyone who attended the Veterans Day events last week. Then a couple of notes here, on November 30th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., Light Up Palmer will be holding its annual community celebration at Depot Park. The scheduled events can be found online at Light Up Palmer Facebook page. On December 7th, at 10:30 a.m. here at Town Hall in this building, in this room, will be holding a Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day ceremony in conjunction with Hernevitz donation dedication. The Hernevitz family will be donating several items which will be displayed at Town Hall on the other side of this, in between the town clerk's office and in the hallway. So that is gonna be a permanent structure, so the family actually got a flag to this, the last couple of years, the whole process of discovery. And that'll be the families donating that to the historical commission, that, that'll be on display all the time for all residents. And then on December 16th, at 5:00 p.m. at the library, that is the date for the tentative meeting for the update from Mass DOT in terms of the rail project. December what? December 16th at 5:00 p.m. It's not, it's just tentative right now. I'll announce that at our December normal meeting, but that's, that's the date we have lined up.
At what time, Brad?
Yep, 5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m., yeah.
And there was 11 original sites that were reviewed and six, not five, are on the Phase 2 list that they'll go more in-depth on. But again, they'll walk through the whole process from Phase 1, Phase 2, and that's where we ended right now for the project and the steering committee will be there as well.
Any questions for, oh, sorry, were you done?
Nope, and the other, the other two notes I had is the quotes we got for the permanent surfacing. For just the Thorndike Playground, that was $110,000 and for Converse Middle School was the 135, which just covered the upper playground piece, didn't cover the lower playground piece to my knowledge. So you can see there's a big price gap there, but maybe that's something we talk about in capital if we have the money long-term to make that adjustment too.
Well, it's cheaper to put mulch, you're talking about mulch. It's cheaper to replace it every three years then.
Yeah.
And that's a state, that's a state thing, mandate thing that you have to have however many inches of mulch?
Well, I mean-
Yes.
You don't want kids like-
Oh, stop, don't even go there. Okay, you've seen the playgrounds when I was a kid where you didn't have five feet of mulch.
We had broken glass.
Just some dirt and, just some dirt and some grass and take your scuffs and stop being-
Doesn't kill you, makes you stronger.
Okay, miscellaneous correspondence, anybody have correspondence? I do, I did receive an email regarding a zoning complaint that I did forward to Brad. Council roundtable, anybody?
Yes, the Three Rivers Chamber of Commerce, Christmas on the Common, will be the first weekend in December, which will be the 8th, not the 1st, because the 1st is the weekend right after Thanksgiving, so it'll be on the 8th.
Because the 1st is the weekend right after Thanksgiving, so it'll be on the 8th. It starts at 3:00 p.m.
And the 30th is downtown Palmer, correct? Light Up Palmer or whatever?
Yep.
Yep, Depot Park.
Yep, it'll be also Small Business Saturday, so anybody who wants to get out and support small businesses, local businesses, please. That's what it's all about, is giving back and Small Business Saturday.
Anybody else? Okay, we are going to go into executive session. Barb, Barbara, if you just wait a minute, okay, I'll talk to you. Yeah. Under Master of Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. This is for the Police and Dispatchers Union negotiations. I do so declare. We will adjourn directly from executive session. We will not go back into formal session. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
Make a motion.
Second.
This is a roll call vote. Matt?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Jess? Chris?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, good night.